Good evening. Today's date is December 6, 2023, and the time is 6:30. I, Tony Bowie, would like to call on the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order.
Role call. Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Power?
Here.
Commissioner Walbert?
Here.
Vice Chair Hamadi?
Here.
Chair Bowie?
Here.
Thank you. Record shows that all commissioners are present.
We will now do the flag salute, and I will lead us in the flag salute. Please stand up and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as just law. Now go to item number three. Report from the Planning Secretary regarding late communication.
Thank you, Chair Bowie. We have no late communications to report.
Let's move to item four. Ex parte communication. This section is intended to allow all officers the opportunity to review any discourage, disclosure regarding site visits, or ex parte communication about the public hearing and regular business items. Are there any disclosures? Any others? We don't have any disclosure, so let's move to item number five. Special presentation. I see we have a special presentation this evening, so I would like to call on the planning manager to introduce item 5.1, please.
Thank you, Chair Bowie. It's my pleasure to turn it over to our Deputy City Attorney Russ Mihara, who will provide us with the presentation on Brown Act compliance and open public meetings. And we have a PowerPoint for you tonight, so we get the PowerPoint up on the screen, and I know Russ will provide the narration.
All right. Thank you. For many of you, this will be a repeat somewhat of your Planning Commission training from last March, and it's all about Brown Act compliance and open public meeting, which may be familiar but which may have more meaning to you now that you've been planning commissioners for almost a whole year and for Mr. Anderson for 20 years. Next slide. The Planning Commission meetings are usually the only interaction the public has with the Planning Commission, so these public meetings establish the face of the commission. The Planning Commission exists to aid in the conduct of the people's business about land use decisions, so their actions must be taken openly and their discussions also must be conducted for all to see. Next slide. The right of access arises from the California Constitution. Since the people have the right of access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business, they also have the corresponding right to view all the written documents reviewed or given to commissioners before the Planning Commission meeting. All documents made available to the Planning Commission by staff shall be made available to the public even if those documents are submitted immediately prior to the Planning Commission meeting. All communications of Planning Commission members concerning Planning Commission business, including emails, are subject to disclosure at the time of the Planning Commission meeting and also through the Public Records Act. Any and all person shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the Planning Commission and request commissioners' communications to anyone concerning any item on the agenda. Next slide. Once again, Planning Commission meetings must be open and public, and it prohibits any actions that undermine the open meeting rule. Examples include when a majority of Planning Commission members congregate outside a properly noticed and duly convened meeting to discuss, deliberate, or take action on a matter within the Planning Commission jurisdiction. Serial meetings are prohibited. Examples of that are in-person contacts, emails, texts, or contacts with a majority through a third person. Next slide. A chain meeting is when Member A talks to Member C, who talks to Member C. Hub-and-spoke meeting is when A talks to B, then C, and then D. Serial meetings can occur through staff, which is why Planning Commission staff is very careful to answer questions or provide information to individual commissioners so long as any views or positions by the members of the commission are not communicated to other members of the board. Next slide. Exemptions to the Brown Act. Individual contacts are okay as long as communications do not result in a serial meeting. Citizens may lobby one by one each Planning Commission member. However, due process restrictions require disclosure of these ex parte communications. Staff briefings to individual Planning Commission members are okay as long as staff does not disclose the communication to other commissioners. It's okay for all the commissioners to attend either a conference, a seminar, a retreat, a community meeting, other legislative meetings, or social or ceremonial gatherings, but please do not talk about Planning Commission business when you are attending those other events. What do these exemptions actually mean? Please do not talk to each other about Planning Commission business. Do not send texts or emails about Planning Commission business or tell others about your commitment to a pending matter or even your dislike of a pending matter that's on the Planning Commission agenda or may be on the Planning Commission agenda in the future. Do not solicit responses from other Planning Commission members when forwarding emails or other communications to other Planning Commissioners or members of the public. At social or ceremonial events, do not talk to each other about agency business. Always be aware of public perception of improper discussion and never hit the "reply all" button when sending an email related to Planning Commission business. Next slide. Remote meetings. There's a new section that became effective January 1 of 2023 that amends the Brown Act to authorize commissioners to teleconference when they can demonstrate just cause or emergency circumstance, such as childcare, contagious illness, physical or mental disability, travel while on official city business. However, the Planning Commission still needs a quorum of commissioners present in person. Specific notice and timing requirements concerning disclosure of the reason for non-attendance are required and must be done ASAP or at the very latest, at the beginning of the Planning Commission meeting. Next slide. Planning Commission Agenda Requirements. The agenda must be publicly accessible and distributed in advance to those who request copies. If the staff report, the resolution, the ordinance, or other attachments are not ready at the time the agenda is posted, these attachments can be posted as soon as they are ready for distribution to Planning Commission members and members of the public. The agenda must be posted on the agency website. There have been situations when there have been technical difficulties with the website. However, one Attorney General opinion has stated that the Brown Act is not necessarily violated if the website is unavailable for a short time that can cause the agenda to become inaccessible to the public for a portion of the 72 hours that precedes the scheduled meeting if the agency acts in good faith and substantially complies with other posting requirements. A brief description of each item of business must be listed. If there is an omission of an item, the Planning Commission cannot consider the item unless it later just schedules a special meeting to coincide with the regular meeting. And every agenda must allow comment on the agenda item prior to commission action. Next slide. Staff's Role in Preparing the Agenda. The agenda is the cornerstone of the Brown Act because it contains the items that can be discussed and acted upon by the Planning Commission. Staff ensures compliance with the Brown Act because the agenda provides the necessary information, including the staff report, professional analysis, local policies, applicable state and federal laws, and recommendations, which forms the basis of consideration of the Planning Commission's action and provides the public with all the information that will guide the Planning Commission through its review of project applications. The agenda, staff report, and other documents also anticipates and prepares for Planning Commission and public questions and comments. Next slide. Brown Act and Social Media. My understanding is most of you do not use social media. However, for those of you that do, planning commissioners may sometimes use social media platforms to answer questions from the public, provide information or solicit information regarding a matter within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. However, a majority of Planning Commissioner members may not use it to discuss -- however, a majority of Planning Commission members may not use it to discuss among themselves official business, which means communications made, posted, or shared on social media between Planning Commission members, including comments or use of emojis that express reactions to communications made by other members of the Planning Commission. Next slide. So a hypothetical social media post could be during a Planning Commission meeting. It comes to the attention of the chairman that three Planning Commission members shared their concerns on Facebook about a project before the Planning Commission meeting. This may be considered a serial meeting because three Planning Commissioners shared concerns about an item on the agenda. Therefore, Planning Commission members should avoid any comment on any matter before the Planning Commission on social media so as to avoid an inadvertent serial meeting. Next slide. Planning Commission Agenda Requirements. Of course, no discussion or action on items not on the posted agenda. Since the Planning Commission hears land use matters, the sequoia action must be included on the agenda title. In addition, if the land use approval includes a city subsidy, there must be notice of the city subsidy on the agenda. There are exceptions for allowing limited discussion of non-agenda items. Next slide. The most common reason why planning commissioners may want to discuss a matter is during oral communications. If somebody comes up during oral communications and brings up a topic, sometimes planning commissioners want to discuss it in further detail, but the Brown Act only allows you to make a brief response. You can ask a question for clarification. You can refer to staff for further research. You can request staff to report back on an issue as long as the matter is agendized, or planning commissioners, as in our present agenda, are allowed to make brief announcements of their activities. Next slide. A Planning Commission meeting must have a quorum to transact business, three of five members. So even if we have three members and one member leaves to use the restroom, we've got to stop the meeting because we no longer have a quorum. Again, every agenda must allow public comment on the agenda prior to the action, and the regular Planning Commission meeting must allow comment on items not on the agenda but within the agency's jurisdiction. Public Role. Although the public has a right to comment, it is not unlimited. The public must adhere to time limits for both oral communication and public hearing. Speak in order or when recognized. Address only the commission. However, a member of the public may not disrupt a Planning Commission meeting to the extent that it interferes with other members of the public's constitutional rights to address Planning Commission members, express their preferences and grievances, and otherwise weigh in on important local issues affecting their city. Next question, next slide. Regulating Public Speakers. The Planning Commission may not prohibit criticism of the city or the commission. The Planning Commission may not prohibit audio or video recording of the meeting unless it makes a reasonable finding that it cannot continue because of disruptions. What do you do when you come across disruption? It is only disruptive when it actually disrupts, disturbs, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting. A prior warning from the chairperson is required. However, if the behavior only makes you uncomfortable, it is not considered disruptive. If the disruptive person is using force or threatening force, they may be removed without a prior warning to cease their behavior. If there is a willful interruption of a meeting by a group or groups so as to render the orderly conduct of such meeting infeasible, the room may be cleared and business can continue with the press allowed to stay. Next slide. Role of the Chair. Since the agenda is the guidepost for the Planning Commission meeting, the chairperson will ensure compliance with the Brown Act, you know, as Chairman Bowie does, by following the agenda and ensuring the proceedings do not veer from the agenda. And the chairman will also manage the public testimony and ensure that no extended discussion occurs on items that are not on the agenda. He will facilitate orderly deliberations and maintain order in the meetings. The Legal Challenges to a Brown Act Violation. The mechanism to challenge a Brown Act violation before a lawsuit is filed is to demand that the board cure and correct the violation. If there was improper action taken, a person would send the board a demand to cure or correct the violation of the Brown Act. The demand shall be in writing and clearly described, the challenged action of the board, and the nature of the alleged violation. The demand shall be made within 30 days if the action was taken in open session and within 90 days if the action was taken in closed session. You can all wake up now.
Thank you for your presentation. Do any others have questions to Mr. Russell?
Yes, I have a question for our city attorney. So if I were to contact staff regarding an agenda item a couple days before the meeting or a day before the meeting, would I have to notice that under ex parte communications?
In my opinion, no. Because you're not talking to a member of the public. You're not talking to the developer. You're just talking to staff and asking them questions about the staff report in which they prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever we discuss with staff cannot be discussed with the commissioners. Personally, let's say if I meet with the staff and ask them questions about a project or something, I cannot discuss it with the commissioner?
No.
That would become a Brown Act problem, right?
You have to be careful what you communicate.
Okay.
You can certainly just say that you had certain questions and that they're free to contact planning staff themselves to get the answer.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. In the social meeting, if two of us happily accidentally meet together in the social meeting without any planning, what would constitute a Brown Act violation?
I know, in a social meeting, in a party, in a legislative meeting, you are allowed to all attend, but just be mindful that others are observing and you need to be careful what you talk about.
Okay, thank you. Any Planning Commission have any questions to Mr. Russell? We do not have any question to you. Thank you for your presentation. It's really helped you all of us now. Now, we would like to go to oral communication. Planning Commission Clerk, please read the procedure into record.
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at the time and state your name and city of residence for the record. We have one speaker card.
Do we have any requests to speak during the oral communication?
Yes, we have one. It's Jason Q. Dewan? Dewan? Yes, you may step to the podium.
Three minutes, so, yeah, hi. My name is Jason Q. Dow and I live in the city of Westminster. My concern is about the homeless population that we've been seeing in our city. I've met a lot of homeless people and they ask for money a lot, and I give out money. And also, I feel concerned. I truly feel concerned for their well-being. The problem is, I think, you know, there's serious mental health issue with these homeless people because they don't have the motivation of doing something good for themselves, you know. But so we need to help them a lot of -- For example, I talked to one of them and I told him I can take him to the homeless shelter. And so as I drove him, and he told me to drop him off somewhere. And I give another couple who were homeless. They need a place to stay, so I gave them the website so that they can look into it. And I told them, you need to find a job. They stand outside looking for people to clean up their windows. So I told them that you should post your resume on Indeed.com and you might get a job, even 15, 16. So somehow, these people, they cannot find jobs or they're on drugs or they have mental health issue. And I think because of the government, the policy that we employ is causing people to lose their morale so they don't want to do anything, or maybe personal conflict. So over time, they lose their motivation, you know, their self-worth, and they become homeless, right? They use drugs or they have mental health issue. So my recommendation is we should have a budget or spend money, like having like, you know, like a program where they can spend a couple hours each day to make money, like maybe pay them like minimum wage, like 16 bucks an hour, two days a week, two hours a day where they can go and then just pick up trash around the city, cleaning up the trash, you know, so that they feel healthy and feel motivated to do the work. The problem is, they cannot themselves to initiate, and we kind of let them go open loop. They need help. So we have social worker, but a lot of time, I think, maybe they have issue to go to the shelters and have problem with the people there or whatever. But whatever the problem is, we have to prioritize them so that they can go back to shelter and then they become more self-motivated, you know, and then so they build up the habit of wanting to go to work. You know, even two days after that, they can go homeless. They can go anywhere they want. But over time, they will groom them back themselves and stop using drugs or, you know, or having, you know, mental health issue or losing motivation.
Thank you, that's the time.
And also, our city should clean the street very cleanly because a lot of our streets are so dirty, especially around the corner. especially at the, around the corner. Westminster, Magnolia.
Mr. Jason?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comments?
No, we do not have any more. You can close it.
So now I will close the oral communications and move on to the next item. Item number seven. Approve of the Minutes of November 15, 2023.
Uh, Chairman, I'd like to move-
Wait, wait, oh, sorry. Uh, I was, I was gonna talk to him.
Okay.
He left already.
He left already?
I was, I was gonna respond to him for a second. Too late now, he calls the public fast. I was gonna give him a recommendation, not to mess with these people.
Okay.
There's a lot of reasons for it.
Chair Bowie, uh, I'd like to move to approve the minutes, but with one change in, uh, item 8.1 under the motion section. The vote is erroneously recorded as 5-0. It should be 3-0. So with that change, I would move to approve.
A second.
Okay, we have motion and a second.
I just have, just a question for our attorney. These are the minutes of November 15th. So we had two commissioners absent. Can they make the motion in second? Russell and? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're good to go.
Sorry, who was, who did the motion?
I did.
Okay, yeah. And then, who seconded it?
I did. Hamadi.
Who?
Hamadi.
Hamadi, oh, sorry. All right, um, do you want to do roll call?
Yes, roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbert?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi?
Yes.
Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried five to five approving November 15, 2023 Planning Commission minutes with a change for the vote count from five zero to three zero.
Thank you. Let's move to item number eight. Public Hearings. Do we have any?
None.
We have none, then we go to item number nine. Regular Business. Any regular business? No. So we have none. Now, item number 10, Reports. Do we have any reports? No, none. Now, item number 11, Matters from the Staff. Are there any announcements from the staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bowie and members of the Planning Commission. I wanted to express our gratitude for everything that the Planning Commission and the staff has done in the year 2023 as we close out, uh, this year. This is our last meeting in this calendar year. So we appreciate everything that you have done and all the decisions you've made, the wisdom that you've used in your decision-making. When we see, when we see you again on January 17th, our intent is to come back next year. We'll probably have a lot of, uh, projects to bring to you and I think initially, we would like to update you with some of the great things that are happening in the Community Development Department. There's a number of things that are going on. And we will be updating you on our progress on those things. So, um, we're looking forward to, uh, using this time between now and January 7th for all of us to rest and, uh, come back and, uh, have a very productive 2024. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do any, uh, Planning Commission has anything to the staff?
I just wanted to wish my fellow commissioners and staff a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. So, thank you.
I want to say it's very ni- nice working with all of you.
Thank you.
Yes, just, just a, a question. Mimi, do we have a, a phone number or a, an address for the person who spoke on oral communications or just a name? My, my thought is if, if there's some way to contact them, perhaps s- staff could contact them. I know we have a homeless task force in our police department and maybe they could contact this person and let them, uh, know what, what's available and maybe how this, how they could help to meet this person's concerns if there's a way to contact them.
I served on the Board of Alcohol and Drugs in North County for six years, I think. And I've seen, I went to a lot of places where they, uh, have programs for the, uh, people that abuse drugs. But a lot of them are, you're wasting your time. They go in and go out, do it again. And waste of the county money. And he, he doesn't even know that he's risking his life, right, doing what he's doing. They could be on, on drugs, they could stab him, they could take what he has, they could take his car. He doesn't know what he's dealing with. That job should be just left for the police department.
But yeah, we do have his contact information.
Okay.
Yeah.
I am Tony Bowie, the Chair of the Planning Commission, who would like to appreciate all of the work by the staff being working hard to bring all the things together and present to us. And, uh, I hope that in the new year we will have, uh, keep on working and hopefully I will, uh, step down and, uh, aside, make the position opening so that the new person will be here to take turn to manage the Planning Commission meeting. And please put it in the agenda for next meeting so that we can have a, uh, turnover of the, uh, Planning Commission Chair, Chairman position. Any of us have any que- comments and, uh, questions regarding, uh, our meeting?
I have just one thing. People of Westminster, if you're watching this show, just want you guys to know that your planning staff here in the city is, uh, second to none. They are excellent. They work extremely hard to put together the data that we need to zone the city properly, get planning done so that we can grow and develop the city. It's just been a pleasure working with you this last year. All my commissioners, same. And, you know, uh, we are very excited and looking forward to what's gonna happen in 2024. We can't thank you enough.
It's been a good year. We've made some progress and looking forward to 2024. And I've been with the city since 1971 and, um, things have changed. And we've got a great crew onboard, great commission, great staff. And thanks to the community and thanks to the businesses also who have come forward through the commission for review of their projects. That's, that's something that we really need here is new projects, new activity in our city and that's encouraging to see. Thank you.
Well, before we go to, uh, item 13, I would like to conclude whatever I've been doing with all of you in a whole word. T, E, T, A. Tita. T is transparency. E is efficiency. T is trustworthiness. And A is accountability. I would like to stress that point, Tita, so that then all of us will work together to help our city of Westminster thriving and improving in own aspect to serve the people of Westminster residents. Tita. Transparency, uh, efficiency, trustworthiness, and accountability. Now shall we move to item 13. And this is the time for us to adjourn the meeting at 7:04. And the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission will be on Wednesday, January 17, 2024, at 6:30 PM.